Welcome back everyone. Auditor, what you got for us?
So in our ever, never-ending quest to improve customer service in the recording department, we're planning to upgrade the system with three new features. One is called Recording Access which will allow small customers, small filers rather, to electronically file documents rather than coming into the auditor's office. So that will be a plus for them. And then we're also planning to incorporate an e-certify function which will allow application of a digital version of the auditor's signature on a certified records, certified record so they can do that remotely as well. And then in and around all that, we're going to upgrade our payment system for credit card transactions using the Tyler Payments system. And with that, we'll be purchasing two credit card readers for the counter. The total for all that is thirteen thousand one hundred and nine dollars. And that money will be coming out of the auditor's O and M restricted fund and not touch current expense, so no budget amendment is required.
I like no budget amendment required and no general fund money. I'm supportive.
The credit card readers, can you use like the, what's that called, a square?
I'm not sure, I haven't actually seen the actual device. But they'll replace the current readers that we have upstairs now.
Now, the thing with the squares, they charge a big percentage and they charge a per transaction fee. Yeah, for my business.
And speaking of transactions-
Wouldn't you charge them, just out of curiosity, wouldn't you charge them back? I know when the auditor or when the treasurer takes money, if there's a fee for doing it, they charge the client.
We charge for the fee also for the electronic-
And that's at three dollars.
Credit card service.
Because I think we have to, I think we're supposed to.
And I should also mention, these services should help us bring in a little bit more revenue. There's a three dollar per transaction charge for use of Recording Access and for e-certify. So every little bit helps. That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you had to go to-
I was scratching.
Oh. Over here, pay attention to that.
I'll do this, make it clear. That's pretty subtle.
He'll throw papers at us.
Next time.
All right. You guys are up. Got your changes from last week.
Yes, it's been a very busy one business day.
Yeah, no problem. We've got-
Damn, that's funny. Checked my email this morning, it's like, oh.
I think we can go through MaceCom and track that down.
I got a call from Will Harris last night asking for some help on a situation in North and Dave was able to definitely help us.
Good job. All right, take it away.
Okay, small Musa.
Okay, I actually created an additional document that I'm going to pull up on the screen. But the one, can you see that? Can I see that? So the one item that I came to brief today was that finally we have a contract with Commerce for our consolidated homeless grant. And so the total amount for this, I'll have the attachment with me, is seven million four hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars. And so Commissioner Trask, thank you for pointing out that in my previous briefing on June ninth, the amount that I had stated we had released in the RFP was seven million forty-seven six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. That was a typo. If you would like to see my chickens scratch, the amount actually should be four hundred, seven million four hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and forty-six. And so that contract, we're asking to move to the August fifth action agenda for approval. So again, this is just accepting the contract with Commerce. Subcontract with our agencies will be, I will hopefully be briefing next Monday.
Looks like it's changed a bit.
Yes, so that's the next order of business. Are there any questions about the Commerce contract?
No, I'm so happy that, because I was really hesitant to move forward with anything else until we did get the contract from Commerce because sometimes they change their amounts.
They, well, actually, they did change their amounts already. So on the screen was the original budget that we had. And it was originally seven point eight million, I don't know if you can see that. And then about, I think a week and a half later, there was a formula error, so it was reduced to seven point four million.
Yeah, thank you for checking on that.
It came out the same time as the new ConCon contract came out.
Oh, really?
So we finally got that signed around and I got that over to Jennifer last Thursday, I think.
Any more questions about the Commerce contract? Or is that going to move to the action agenda?
That's good.
Okay. Second order of business, which came up Friday afternoon, I sent the correspondence to the board, Coastal Community Action Program did decline to proceed with the original award that was awarded to them. And so what I did was I wanted to provide for two purposes. One, just to kind of document the discrepancies or the typos that were in the original briefing from June ninth, break down what the actual budget looks like from the Commerce contract and then how it will go to the subcontractors providing the services. So, I don't know if you can see that on the screen, but, so again, the CHG contract, seven point four million fifty-three thousand five hundred and forty-six. Our total homeless response system is actually increased by six hundred thousand because the county has local document recording fees, which is three hundred thousand a year, six hundred thousand dollars total, which brings the total amount for a response system to a little bit over eight million. However, the county, so this would include my time, Dave's time, Todd's time, anybody who's working in administering this grant, we're only retaining nine percent in administration. We are allowed up to fifteen percent. That would be one point two million, but we're only taking nine. So that's a little bit less than six hundred thousand. So it kind of cancels out a little bit, when you add the document recording fees, how much the county retains in administration. And this is for the two, the total of two years. Moving down, so once you remove that admin, it still kind of retains seven point four million that goes to the providers providing the services. In the original, so the funding recommendations that were brought on June sixth had a total of five hundred and fifty thousand seven twenty-nine to Crossroads Housing for both their onsite and offsite emergency shelters as well as a rapid rehousing, long-term rental assistance. New Horizons Communities is for the permanent support housing, that's fifty-two thousand. For the Youth Connection, nine hundred and twelve thousand six eighty-one for rapid rehousing, eviction prevention, rental assistance, and their offsite emergency shelter. Turning Point Survivor Advocacy Center, two hundred and fifty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-eight for their emergency shelter. And then, three different programs, so Housing Essential Needs, Eviction Prevention, Diversion Coordinating Entry, and Care Coordination for Community Action Program, or, sorry, Community, Coastal Community Action Program. These are the amounts that will need to be awarded elsewhere because they did decline. A reserve, there was a one hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-four in reserve for a single adult emergency shelter, which we did not receive any applications for, but we have that fund available should we identify an agency and allocation for that later this year. View Community Advisors was a contract that we had executed in fiscal year twenty-five, and forty thousand of that has to come out of fiscal year twenty-six. So that is only for one year, that does not come out of the full biennium.
And who does that?
That is View Community Advisors. They're that, they were doing the five-year plan out of Atlanta.
Can you give me a, with fence boards around it, description of the single adult emergency shelter, what would be eligible?
I can, I, at the top of my head, I don't have that, but I believe-
Send it to me later.
Sure, okay.
Figure out where, how.
Yes, I can do that.
So do you have a recommendation as to how to proceed since Coastal has declined?
Well, what I did was I brought the scoring from the original RFP. And if you want to just, I mean, if you go down the line, the agencies, so for coordinating entry, we did receive three different organizations applied. It was Coastal Community Action Program, the Youth Connection, and Crossroads Housing. The Youth Connection scored a little bit higher than Crossroads by just a margin of three points in terms of the average scores for the whole advisory board. Things to keep in mind is, in the previous biennium, we did have two lead coordinating entry agencies. The Youth Connection managed youth up to, transitional ages up to twenty-four. And then Crossroads was single adults, or adults above that age. The amounts were a lot more last year, so it was a little bit more to split between two agencies. If you wanted to select one agency, it would be between those two. And then for Housing Essential Needs, we actually received four applications, Crossroads Housing, Community Action Council, Coastal Community Action Program, and Catholic Community Services. Crossroads Housing did score the highest among the three that are remaining, or the two that are remaining. And then Eviction Prevention, Crossroads Housing was the only other agency applied that was not already awarded. So those would be the options from the original pool that applied.
So the coordinated entry, the diversion coordinated entry, care coordination, which is seventy-five thousand, would be divided up between the two, they scored the same?
Within three points.
Within three points. The Youth Connection scored higher by three points.
But I think most of your respondents that are going into coordinated entry are adults.
Right, exactly. So, the Youth Connection, and they do also, both agencies do have the pathways program through choice, which really kind of covers, that is really able to fund the care coordination part of it. So that does fill a little bit of a gap. But if you're looking for a recommendation, Crossroads Housing has been the previous provider, and they do see, they would have more people to see than Youth Connection. I don't, I don't know what happened. Okay.
So, a few questions, auditor. I understand why they would pull their application, but I myself, I saw a benefit in having more involved, especially with what's going on. I know that I myself would have liked to have seen us return the funding to what it was for a year or two to see how they can work with the new structure that we're putting forward. But I also wonder if there's possible ways, if we have to go within this parameter, if there's a way to split the baby a little bit, because one may not be as good at it spending all that extra money and finding out how they do in order to empower them in the future. But I also have a belief is there is a committee, and I know running out of time-wise, and we have a person that sits on that committee. And I've been consistent from the beginning on this, I'd like to see how you feel about it and if you think you can bring it back, or what you think.
I don't know whether, I mean, it seems like that's just going to drag this on and on if we go back. I think we can just decide here between the three of us.
It's your committee, if you're comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with us doing that. I mean, I think we did a good job. We, you know, caused some pains and some problems, but that's what happens. Budgets get cut, things happen. But I don't know how Youth Connections can handle the older folks, so I didn't quite follow what you were-
Yeah, well, so-
They're up to twenty-four.
They're up to transition age to twenty-four. So typically, they're able to, I think for this amount of money, Crossroads would be seeing more people. And there are, to Dave's point, more adults and families than there would be for you.
And the youth can still connect through coordinated entry at Crossroads or at Catholic's. They both have paths.
Has Turner's wife put in anything for either of us as well?
Not for coordinated entry. So for coordinated entry, the only other agencies that apply for Youth Connection and Crossroads.
Okay, so is there a way to split this so that the ones that deal with youth get a certain amount and the other ones get the remainder?
We could do that. We could, so it would be the similar, it would be exactly how we did it last biennium, which there are two lead agencies. So the Youth Connection would do youth and then Crossroads would do anybody above age twenty-four.
What would it take for you to put that together to bring it to us?
Not a lot. I've already got them drafted. The contracts are, have been kind of ready to go.
Okay, then if you already have that, and is that something we can just, are you prepared enough for us just to move forward if that's what we decided we wanted to do? Or do you want to bring it back for-
I would have to bring it back, so all the subcontracts would be back Monday, yes.
If that's comfortable with that, I am.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. But we won't have a meeting tomorrow, not the next Tuesday.
No, we have a meeting tomorrow.
We have a meeting tomorrow, and then on the fifth, which I will not be at. I'll be on a ship.
Will you be for the Monday or just not for Tuesday?
No, I'll be Sunday. You guys can handle it.
As I say, yeah, you know what this is. It's not like you don't, you know, this is your first rodeo, you know what this is, what we're talking about. Yeah, so just make sure, if you don't mind, before she leaves, get those contracts over to her so she has, can get input immediately.
And if I have any problems, I can always write a statement Travis can read it.
And because we're doing this other, we have a little time actually, right? Because we're doing this other thing tomorrow, establishing it for-
The Commerce contract?
The temporary one that we're doing tomorrow, that's on tomorrow's-
Oh, that is, that's for Housing and Essential Needs, that's for him.
That's what I'm talking about, is the head monies and stuff, so. So I guess what I'm saying is-
About us, we'll do it kind of-
Yeah, we're not on fire. So it could even wait till you come back. So we, because we can't pass it.
Let's keep it, let's keep it going.
We can't pass it.
But if I have any problems with-
We can't pass it.
I felt the air get sucked out of the room.
On the fifth, there is.
She just won't be here.
I just won't be here.
Okay.
And if I have any problems, Melissa and I and Dave can talk about it.
I'm down with that, that works for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So was that specifically for coordinated entry? So we also have eviction prevention and housing and essential needs to re-award.
I know what I just talked about in my head was versus the coordinated entry.
Okay.
What do you have for the other ones?
For the other two, it was-
Housing and-
Crossroads was the number two applicant.
Oh, correct, correct. Yeah, so Crossroads was the new, number two applicant for Housing and Essential Needs.
Is there a proponent for the Youth Connection on that?
They did not apply for Housing and Essential Needs.
Okay, then I'm supportive of you, Crossroads.
And Eviction Prevention, Crossroads was the only agency also that applied that was not awarded, so.
I'm definitely-
Okay, I think that's it.
Do you want me to send a response letter to Coastal CAP thanking them for their application? Or did the commission want to do that?
I don't.
You don't?
I think there's three of us, so.
Yeah, okay.
I believe his letter was very-
I didn't read it, so I just knew.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm, yeah, it was pretty clear in his letter why he did it.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm glad that he actually spoke to the other action council.
You know, I tried to print this one and my computer would not open it.
I printed it, but it never printed.
Yeah, I had some problems too. Did he print any sweat?
I don't know what you guys' problems are, but I didn't have any help.
Hmm.
Yeah, yeah, so.
You probably got the copy I printed.
No, I was here before you. I hear you can hear that one.
That's pretty clear.
That's all I've got.
Okay, the only other thing I've reported in this, this happens every year, and it happened over the weekend, sheriff's office called me about bats in a home. So, so the public knows this time of year, as the bug population drops, bat interactions with people become more common. The bats get stressed and they go places they normally wouldn't go, looking for food and, so we have a checklist, if somebody has problems with bats, call us, we can run you through a checklist, whether the bat needs to be captured or just kicked out the door, so.
How many have they just dropped off at your office over the years?
Oh, we have had a lot of bats come in, yeah. We had one come in last week in double netting, they caught him in a couple of fishnets. So.
I saw one on, somebody posted it and they took it out of their house.
Yeah, so, you know, we have had in the past, a few, very, very few rabid bats, very few, like the two in ten years or something like that, so. But if, if somebody is in a room with a bat, they wake up, they've been sleeping in a room with a bat, that's a bat we want to find and get tested, so.
If you shoot them with a paintball gun, you can mark them, we'll find them later.
Yeah.
That is not a recommendation by-
No, that is not a recommendation by the commission.
But that's, it just, it came up and it comes up every summer about this time, as things start drying out, we have poor people bat interaction, so. Yeah, we'll stick that on Facebook and we'll put it on the website again, just to refresh things.
I like having them in the backyard when I can have one, they eat so many bugs.
Yeah, right, they're awesome.
Well, we got a guy up north, it's called, he's called, knows the Batman. And he actually builds the boxes for people, they're pretty awesome boxes and stuff, and he gets them all around. Do you? From him, by chance?
No.
Yeah, it's a Batman, that's what they call him, it says on his truck too.
Yeah.
It's written in swex spray paint, the Batman. It's powerful, I love my home, that's how we roll.
Well, that's all I've got. We did do the contracts with DOH, they were effective July first, but we finally got statements of work last week and I got those to, to Byerly, and so that's all done.
Awesome. And Melissa, thank you.
Thank you.
Especially through trying time, you did excellent job.
Thank you, appreciate it. Well, we're under the gun here with timing, so I'm glad that we could bring things forward in time for the August fifth action agenda. Any more delay, I would be a little worried, so we'll get it done.
I'm just glad that Commerce finally, and state government, they're slower than we are.
Yeah, and they had a lot of turbulence within their departments in June, and I think that's what caused a lot of the delays in the contracting.
There's still a lot of delays at the state.
Yeah.
And thank you, Matt, for your work on all this. I appreciate it.
Okay, I'll give you other stuff.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thanks.
You bet. Okay.
Okay, Travis, you're up.
I'm up.
You're up.
Yeah, so I just have one thing for you this morning. I have the Washington State Conservation Commission contract for the voluntary stewardship program. And we contract with Mason Conservation District for this, to service the lead agency. So I'm just asking for approval of the contract with the Washington State Conservation Commission in the amount of two hundred and ninety thousand from July first, twenty twenty-five, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, and then the approval of the inter-local agreement with the Mason Conservation District for that work. So, any questions, comments?
No, that's great.
That's all I've got, thank you.
That was difficult.
Yeah.
Hate to be slow, it's so tough.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it looks like I've got the next one. Trying to scroll to my list here, there we go. So this one is just a wraparound from the conversation we had a week or two ago about extending the hourly rate increase for the contracted criminal defense attorneys. It was set to expire and the request was to extend that out until the end of this year. And so that is what the briefing request is at this time. I did talk to Jen about it as far as the associated cost and the budget impact. Doesn't believe that with the salary savings and everything else, that we're going to need a budget transfer. However, she did suggest that we request authority from the board to transfer up to a hundred thousand dollars in, from salaries and benefits into operating to cover the contract costs should we need it.
Makes sense.
I-
I approve.
I don't think we have a choice.
Well, that makes the decision easy, I guess.
It does, it does.
Okay, good, so we will move that forward. And then I don't believe Kelly is here, so I will brief the next one, which was supposed to come from Kelly. This is for the parking lot door at the sheriff's office. That door has been endlessly problematic for, for the facility staff, they are always over there working on it, never shuts right, it's just a whole bunch of problems. So he went out to find out if they can get a different and better back door, which would work with the key fob entry system. And so this is his request for refunding, estimated at about twenty thousand one hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents to replace that door and get that fixed.
It's a spendy door.
Yes, it's my understanding that it's a sliding door, similar to what you would find, similar to what you would find in a court.
The safety of that, what I have, it's an expensive door, I'm choking on that a little bit, but at the same time, the safety aspect of it, if you, depending on what you're doing bringing, coming in, you may need that thing to operate in that manner, so I'll support it.
Yeah, that's, that was one of the things, they're often carrying loads of evidence in and out of doors and things like that, so being able to key fob into it, just have it get out of the way, makes a lot of sense. Plus, the sheriff's office has all their C G S requirements and other things that they have to maintain the security on.
Are they doing the work themselves, do you know?
Uh, no, I do not know the answer to that.
I think according to the contract, they install it.
Yes, that's-
Creasy, I think. Laboring materials are twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, because eventually you'd like to use some of the refunds to cover employees, employees over there doing work. It'll take some pressure off of, off of our general fund. Utilize it for, we've done it in the past when things get tight. But again, I'm supportive.
I'm good.
Yep, I support.
Perfect, move that forward as well.
I almost forgot.
Oh, I'm glad you did it.
I had a slight manic moment, I was like, I think I forgot something, I was.
I did read it, I could have, I could have hammered my way through it.
I just have a request for concurrence from the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees. It looks like Thurston County would like to appoint Susan Headinger for their at-large representative position.
Does anybody know anything about her, do they have any reason to?
I don't know.
I don't either.
I don't, yeah, I don't know her.
Okay, I'll support.
But I would like for them to let us know if they're going to approve our appointee. I should be hearing this week.
Hold off on ours.
Okay. Yeah, I would say we responded theirs after they've responded to ours because our, ours was first.
Yes.
I have reached out to him a few times, we, I believe we're waiting on Thurston County.
We are.
And I should have an answer this week from him.
Everybody else was fine, but Thurston County wanted to hold off until after things.
Yeah, and I did let them know as soon as possible, once everything was good, and they're just still waiting.
It's okay, we'll bring it to us when we have closure on ours.
Yeah, okay. As soon as they say yea, I put it that way, but inaction is worse than action in times, and this is, this has been going on for quite a few months. And I might see some of them, you might see some of them too Wednesday and Thursday because we'll be in Jefferson, kids up for that, Wasek. And so I'll talk to them when I see them.
Okay, so if I don't hear back this week, would you like me to brief it again next week and then see where we're at, or if I hear from them, would you like me to just move this forward?
I have no problem moving forward if we hear on the positive.
Okay, yeah.
If there's, if they're, if it is on the negative, I would like to bring it back and have a full discussion.
Okay. I can do that.
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
And just keep, keep your staff posted so that in case something happens, you don't, you're not here next week.
Yes, yes, I will, I will put that on the, on the growing list of what they need to keep them at.
I think so, since one of them's already in the room.
Yes, she's not going to. Yes, she's, she's not gonna have to. I'll try not to forget.
Okay.
I'll write it down as soon as I get back to my desk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else Travis?
Nope, that is us, I mean, I have a couple of discussion items, we'll wait till the end for it.
Okay.
I have one I'll bring up for, uh, we talked about a little bit before, but uh now we have a, with the minister, we can take action. Uh, we had talked about having an ag uh committee for the Farm Bureau, something like that. Uh, could we have Travis reach out to Farm Bureau to have them bring their person that does this stuff with a straw dog to us, for us to look at what that looks like and perhaps put into place?
Yep, I wanted this since the first time I read it.
So, could, if you don't mind, could you reach out to the Farm Bureau, I'll get you Larry Bold's number, and uh invite them here to bring that proposal, one that they think would work for Mason County, we're not the same as some of these others, and so please mention that tell it to Mason, I myself would also like to see a citizen, at least one or so on that uh committee, because they're, we're all involved with uh our environment when it comes to ag as, as well, we had a great applicant, uh, that one, they came for planning commission. We had some great applicants this last year, I, do you remember, she was really impressive, we were like, but, came at the same time as the doctor and everything else, and.
Yeah.
Peace cake?
Thank you.
Peace cake? Anything? Can we share?
Um, are we in our general discussions? The, I spent a couple hours out at uh Lost Lake, and it's a, it's a similar problem to other ones. They're having a terrible problem with wake boats destroying docks and shorelines. And so we're trying, I've been looking into what, what can be done. They've swamped out boats, sank, you know, sank boats in the, in the neighborhood that a child died last year because of the wake pulled the kid into the water, and kid drowned, so. It's something that we've got to figure out what we can do. Yeah, we've, we've dealt with that several different times, uh, some of the arguments back and forths is to share, was uh enforcement really hard for them to enforce, because looking at which ones does stuff like that. And Ryan, you know, the sheriff has a, a direct knowledge, because that's the sort of thing he does, so he shared a lot of it with us. One of the things we talked about were different options, but there's one we didn't talk about, we currently have lakes that we restrict uh electric, to electric motors uh versus gas motors. Maybe a few of these lakes, even though we have to find a way to enforce it, we can restrict. Maybe not wake boards for everything, because Mason Lake, for example, is a huge lake, Cushman is a huge lake, but maybe some of these other ones, I don't know.
Well, one of, one of the things that occurred to me is if we could uh set a limit for, must have X number of acres of the lake for this, because on a large lake, it's not a problem, the, the wake can dissipate and not do so much damage. But it's, it's, in some areas, it's three hundred feet across, and that thing goes down the middle of that, and you got a ten-foot wake coming off of it three hundred feet out, it's, it is chewing up trees and everybody's dock is like twisted and rattled, so. It's uh, you know, that's a problem, destroying other people's property, but if there's something we can do.
What are you remembering, Commissioner?
It feels like we've, we've discussed this in, in the past, and I know, I know that there is something out there, let's bring Kel and Tim into this conversation.
We also had a, one of the law enforcement officers that was actually spearheading the information, uh, do you remember his name? Was it Dogman or Dogman or?
I don't remember who it was, if we did, I mean, I did, I did a little looking just last week for the commissioner and looked at Thurston County, and it appears that Thurston County has tried to help remedy this problem on some of the smaller lakes by putting on very restrictive speed limits. Essentially making the speed limit
Right.
under such that, you know, you can't effectively wakeboard or anything else. Uh, but that appeared to be in smaller lakes, in channels and things like that, so.
And two things our law enforcement has not been willing in the past, it does mean they won't now, was speed and sound. You know, and.
Well, I know we've got something that, we've discussed this in the past, so I know that there are, there's something out there, if you could bring in Kel and Tim. Because I think that.
I talked to Tim about it briefly, but he was heading out on vacation, so.
Well, again, we did have presentation, that, you're, you're right, but, but that's what I mean, I think the one who brought us the info was uh the deputy. Because he was even working with, I think, Mason Lake to look at different options and different ways to do it. We have a restriction of feet wide wise for some things, but it wasn't, we didn't do it for wakeboard, we did it for something else, so.
No, we did it, it was, it seems like it was docks.
Yeah, well.
And it was, I want to say there's feet. And I can't, and I'm not bringing.
Yeah, I, I don't know whether it's uh restricting them on uh speed limits or horsepower or what, you know, there's something that we can do to, because, I mean, it's causing probably hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of damage to.
Well, there was tons of it in Mason Lake, that was one of the biggest issues, uh, but at the same time, they explained to us that uh it's one thing to say, it's another to, to see something that's underneath the water, that's creating the wake, uh, whether it's turned up or turned down, and but that was the argument back then, again, if we don't mind, reach out to law enforcement too, because they did a lot of work. I just don't remember the name of which deputy did all the work.
Me either, it's been a few years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I'm not sure.
Five, that's a lot of years, actually.
Just like it was my first or second year, no, it wasn't COVID, it was, I had to in the first years.
Actually, well, you're right, before that, so, yeah.
Yeah, B C, before COVID.
B C, nice. Um, and Commissioners, we do have Public Works here, I'm sorry, yeah.
I thought I recognized those faces, and then we'll have Commissioners.
But they left their fearless leader behind.
No, she's fishing.
She's from back there.
I know, I talked to Loretta on Sunday, she just gave her a heads up, and she goes, I'm ready to catch some fish.
Okay, at first we got is Road Vacation four two four.
Okay. Um, Road Vacation four two four, it's out at Skippin Point Tracts, we have the recommendation from the hearing examiner back, so we are requesting that you accept the recommendation and grant the vacation of the right of way, we have the compensation of one thousand five hundred and forty dollars, has already been paid for it. And it would be subject to the conditions of the hearing examiner's stipulations there. So to any easements, ingress, or estrangement.
So the ones around are already gone?
Pardon me?
The ones around it are already been removed?
Uh, part of it, yes, there is a little sliver of a piece, but on this one, none of them went anywhere, they weren't connected to anything. So, from what I found from looking in the archives and and talking to other people up at Public Works, is there was a big acreage below it that was going to be subdivided and never did, so it didn't actually connect to anything. So, it's just sitting there.
And the hearing examiner is recommending that we move forward.
Correct.
Yeah, without being connected, I'm, I'm, there's no chance we'll ever be able to use it.
Well, and this one is the one that has a shop sitting on it.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
I know somebody with a tank. He can use it.
I'm good with it.
Yep, I support.
Okay. Thank you.
Number two is authorization to submit HSIP grant, which is Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant um to wash dot for Co-Columb Road, it's one point five two to four point eight, five point eight nine uh on the Co-Columb Road, to improve uh paved shoulders and replace guardrail and such. So, if we get the grant, we'll know here in September, and if we get it constructed before twenty twenty eight, it is no match. It will be a hundred percent paper. And we are nice designed and ready to go, so.
Call on me, yes, please.
Absolutely.
Nope, you got three.
Uh, next is set a public hearing for uh September sixteen, twenty twenty five, to, to uh have a public hearing to adopt the twenty twenty six annual construction program and a six-year tip.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
And next, DOE?
Yeah, who's offered us a lot of money, our local solid waste funding assistance grant, which I like to call the SWF. Uh, they're offering us, it's basically, their college shares two hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred and six dollars for, and this takes care of our hazardous household waste. A great proportion of that is for recycling operations, we only use about eighty grand of it for hazardous household waste. So that's for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven biennium.
And so what can we do with this?
We, we've, actually, you can do a lot with it, you can provide financial assistance for, for those two programs I mentioned. Or you could promote regional solutions and intergovernmental cooperation for eligible partners, which we talked to the city of Shelton and let them know what we got going on, and early in the year, like in February, we did that, so we can get feedback from them if they're interested, or if we're gonna do anything different. Uh, we promote efficient implementation of programs contained in our local solid hazards, we had wastewater management plan, waste management plans, got too much garbage. And so, yeah, you can use it for a lot of these things, you can use it also for going out to classrooms and, and promoting recycling and teaching, you know, educating your your youth and public outreach, yeah.
I absolutely love that idea, because a lot of people, if you, you don't know what you don't know, and if you don't know that you're supposed to rinse out your cans, or you're not supposed to recycle glass unless you're at Thurston or does Shelton do glass?
I don't know.
No, the inn made us glass, I think.
No, not Nathan, Thurston does.
We do, it gets, it gets end-cycled at the moment, so it is, it's still used, it doesn't go in the landfill, like it gets ground up currently and and added into aggregate for concrete mix.
Yeah, which is so cool.
Mm-hmm.
Makes it shiny.
Yeah, so, we would like to know if you would let us get this grant.
Yep.
Cool.
But I would like to see all the options when the time comes. Yeah. You bet, we'll be discussing in our SWAC meeting, I'm sure, which we have been talking about, the public outreach and education and going into classrooms.
Right, yeah, I'm super excited about that.
So that's all we got?
That's it.
I got one discussion item.
Oh, no.
I know, I was gonna, I saved the bad news for last, um, our water wastewater manager Ralph Scott has tendered his resignation last week. So his last day is next Tuesday, the twenty ninth, yeah.
You didn't stop him?
There's no stopping, yeah, he's, it's just a lie, he's at that point in his career, he goes, this is too much for me.
Yeah, yeah. And so are you asking to?
We would like to advertise, like immediately. I support it. And if possible, I do have one person, that's the only person in the whole unit that's been here longer than me, Lindsay Beam, she would be interested in, in a being a point person, a lead, uh, until we could fill the position. Um, if that's, she's got the licensure and she's the only one that's got the time out there.
I think it's management decision with us, just being supportive of a lead temporarily till it goes through, which I am.
Okay.
Yep.
There's a limit on time that we've been doing that in the past, so just keep that in mind.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
This is an essential position, so.
Yeah.
It's crazy, and Kim, our, our new HR person, is sitting in the room too, so.
Alright.
Yeah, have you guys met Kim?
I haven't, personally, no, but through email.
Through email. Yeah, so work with Kim and Travis and.
Sounds good. Hopefully we can find somebody quick.
Yeah, yeah, well, keep us, keep us updated.
Will do. So Mike, a little pat on the back for Dave, uh, and all the great work you did, especially with Bill out there and that.
His head gets bigger.
Yeah. Sorry about that, he does, he went out there and, you know, it was a couple of people there, and he just handled himself like an absolute pro, and was open-minded, thought of his way around it, it felt just like it did out there in uh
Union.
Union, yeah, uh, please get up on them and figure out what's going on, we thought we'd have that done by summer, it's gonna be over.
Yeah, that's what they said.
Yeah, so please reach back out to them. And before we leave today, if you guys don't mind, I know you probably rode together, I need you for about two minutes, that's all.
Yeah, I rode separate.
Oh, did you, okay, then, yeah, if you don't mind hanging out for a few minutes, thank you.
Yeah, hundred percent.
We're, we're striping, we've got about three hundred and fifty striped miles completed.
Wow.
And uh they've got the real hang of it, and uh it's, it's looking good, and they're working their way north, so we'll be up in probably up into Grapeview in that area uh this week, and then onto the peninsula, so. We're getting, we're getting everything that we had not got last year, and we're getting more, so we're doing a really good job.
How about the quality of the paint compared to, where stuff is going way down in the last year?
It's, it's, if you get looking at it nighttime, we're putting down more beads, and so it's more reflective and, and the paint's thicker than what we usually get to, so it's, uh, we're putting down what it's actually supposed to be down, so.
That's awesome.
And we're ordering more paint as we speak to make sure we have enough to get everything, so.
How many years before do you think we break even with contracted out and uh start to?
Two.
Two? That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
We'll be, our budget for striping will be a lot lower next year than what, what we had planned. The whole thing was, we couldn't even get striped what we wanted striped, because it, we, we didn't have the budget for it, it wasn't planned, it was six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And we had four hundred and fifty budgeted, so, uh, but we're gonna stripe all that area now with our own facilities, our own equipment, and when we want to, and not wait till October to do it, so.
Right before the rains, yeah.
So doing really good.
Yeah.
And then the paving is, uh, we just got completed, so now we're paved all the way from Matlock down to Schaefer State Park. Um, it looks awesome.
It does look good.
Still gotta do a little shoulder work and some tracking.
Our lines are a little wiggly there.
Yeah, they were, on Puget paving, those guys, they just did the work.
So they did that?
Yeah, but it, it, it come out, it's fine, but it, it was a little wavy, um, horizontally, but.
After lunch or before lunch?
Looks after.
After lunch or before lunch?
And then we did something downtown for the city.
Yeah, how's that go?
We did about a mile of uh several roads in the, in, in there, uptown, yeah. So, that turned out good, and we did uh Belfort Elementary Schoolhouse, culvert, um, mile post eleven point four nine. Um, we reset the culvert, raised the culvert up and raised the road, paved that ourselves too and everything, so uh, they did a really, really good job there, and uh we're going to be out, uh, Tohui Blacksmith, there's a the last section of Tohui Blacksmith to converting gravel road to chip steel, that'll be on the twenty eighth. And we're going to Shetland and get that R I D done, and then we'll go over to North Island Drive and get some, um get that done, and Yates Road will be converted too, so. So we're gonna get into our chip steel program here shortly.
That's awesome.
We got uh those road closures scheduled for uh up there on Bear Creek Delado to do those culverts. Um, I'm headed out after this to uh meet with some property owners about possibly doing a bypass there instead of closing the road, not guaranteeing anything yet.
That would be incredible if you pull that off.
But we're gonna try to do that, and so that we can work on both projects at the same time, and, and get done much quicker.
That'd be spectacular.
So we'll see, we'll let you know when, when we find out. Other than that, we're just hanging out.
That's it?
Other than all the stuff you're doing.
Yeah.
They're doing, crews have really embraced this, this type of activity, you know, doing these, these jobs, so.
They've learned a lot for themselves over the years because of how you stretch them.
Yeah, it's, it's been awesome.
And now we're saving, after two years, we're gonna be saving money on, on lines and everything else, I, can't ask for more than that.
Anything from?
Just from Pat, there's a lot, there's a lot of stuff that we didn't used to do, we just did, we contracted everything out, which, actually because I'm conservative, I thought that was always the best way to go, but then we started saving money by leaps and bounds, by doing an internal. Uh, it's supposed to be cheaper the other way, but it turned out not to be, this is one of those times where it pays to do it in-house, well. Uh it's supposed to be cheaper the other way, but it turned out not to be, this is one of those times where it pays to do it in-house, well. Contracts used to be cheap, it's just not important, yeah.
Well, they put some money restrictions on them anymore, with the D B E goals and such things like that, it's just, it's hard on, hard to keep it cheap. We keep moving forward, so. Got anything?
Thank you to you and Loretta for helping put together the stuff on the.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we can get the. Information, I wanna be just as transparent as possible with with everything that we do, and so the more information we can share with people. The better, in my opinion.
Well, there was a lot, a lot to share.
There was, yeah, yeah, still is.
Still is, yeah.
Moving target, but I wanna thank you guys.
Just gotta keep up with it.
Yep. Go. Any help? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Okay.
Okay, now, now we can do Commissioner's discussion, do we have any more? Commissioner's discussion.
That was, that was the one thing I wanted to bring up, was the wake boats.
And that was my one thing that I had.
The problem with speed limits is the boats make giant wakes at five miles an hour, I mean, they're just designed to do that. Nose goes up and they just plow along and make these giant.
Well, I'll bet you over five years, they've gotten even better at it, you know?
Sure they are.
As time goes on, I'll bet that the the technology is making even a bigger wake than it did five years ago.
Yeah, and I think that's the challenge in trying to codify anything is, you know, as soon as the boats change or something else, then you're not resolving the problem. Currently on the books.
I think horsepower would probably be the best way to approach it, because you've got a, you know, a twenty-six foot boat. They fill the back end with water, it takes a lot of horsepower to, even five miles an hour is just. Is plowing so much water to make that wake.
Yep, but then you've got the other side of it, which is investigating and documenting it, having prosecutor's office, having the capacity to do something with it, I mean, there's a lot of. A lot of pieces to that puzzle that we would have to talk through, but we'll definitely get the players together and.
Limiting horsepower is probably the way to do that, because the more, the bigger the weight they're trying to get, the more horsepower they're gonna need, just displacing. That much water takes more power. But but maybe the only type of thing we can put a, to codify is.
Well, so they they brought us a bunch of things and and what they ended up with, what we could enforce, what we couldn't, so. We'll find out more when they bring it to us again, it's been too long to remember it all. They did a lot of work, I do remember, and it was a hard one for us, because I think we leaned really heavy, we were this close to just banning it. It just, it was just.
There's, there's a lot, a a lot of movement, a lot of restrictions, but already. And then there's the enforcement, how do you, how do you?
Yeah, we had citizens, a lot of citizens at the time, especially for Mason Lake.
There's a lot of trees at Lost Lake that are just now falling into the water because of the shorelines.
The saddest part, of all the lakes, Lost Lake, this to me does not seem like one we would have that on, but uh. You know, we were talking back then, we we were talking, uh like I said, Cushman and Mason, we weren't talking about Lost Lake, I. Can't even imagine that on Lost Lake.
I can't either.
But obviously they know.
Apparently they're doing it over at Island Lake as well, same thing.
Yep, sure.
How would you know?
Total guess? Just disagree on the Commissioner.
Educated guess.
Well, I heard heard about that at uh Island Lake, the manage, Lake Management District meeting.
Yeah, that'll be, we'll be hearing about that tomorrow.
Yeah.
That'll be great, okay.
Okay, I have a couple items, a few, I know, they'll be quick. Um I just wanted to wrap back around on joint animal services, cause we talked about that last week.
I did not get that information, I will get it to you, I'll try to get it to you.
No, no worry, we already have a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday at thirteen hundred and the folks from J A S have been communicating via email. With the Sheriff's Office on some of their concerns, so that they're already able to have a productive conversation on Wednesday, so that should go. Fairly quickly, so I wanted to bring that up. Um Chris, in his never-ending hope to make me look good, has already reached out to the Farm Bureau and. Is scheduling a meeting with that, so.
Yeah, oh yeah, I, yeah, I only look good because he keeps doing all that stuff in the background.
There was a running joke to Mark, Mark's first hires were not great, but his second hires were out of the park, he just was great the second time around.
So hopefully, uh we'll have that something scheduled there so that we can talk about it before we have him come and talk to the Commission. And then the only thing I wanted to wrap around on was so that you all know, I will be in Miami from August second through the eighth. So I won't be here that week, so, conference that was pre-arranged from early, early this year, so.
I wanna go to Miami.
Not this time of year, you don't.
It's hot.
Poor choice.
The last time I went and took that on boat, I took the cruise, I think it was December, January.
If you're on the water, it's liable.
It was pretty awesome, actually, I don't like hot, but it's different kinda hot when you're on a boat, the wind's blowing on you and. As you can tell, I'm a, I am now a fan, I can't wait to get back home, yeah. It took her a while to convince me, but she did, now all I'm gonna do is run away to her boat.
No, you had to convince yourself.
Yeah, that's it, that's all.
That's it?
Yep.
Madam Chair, I move you to.
Second.
We're joined, see y'all tomorrow.